And it's not an official meeting, but it's our work session. And we have an agenda. First up is Aaron Cuthlin, local county public works, county engineer, and he's gonna be talking to us with the assistance of Snyder Associates there. And we've got handouts on a stop sign at North East Sixth and 142nd Avenue, which is the Co-op T up here. So Aaron, with the pitch.
I just wanted to start out by talking about how I first got involved with this. And it was a request when there was a stop sign at Third and 142nd to remove that and to move it down to Sixth. Looked at it at that time and we could remove the one at Third, but we couldn't place it at Sixth. It just didn't meet the warrants that were required to follow for a stop sign. So we went through the process of removing it along Third. And then later on, it was requested again. We take another look at it at Sixth and took a look at it. Got updated crash information, new traffic counts, looked at the delays at the intersection, and it still didn't meet the warrants. And then a request came through again. This is over time. This is happening. A request came through again, so asked a traffic engineer, and that's Justin, to take a look at it. And so they went through the process of reviewing it. And so that's where we're at today. I just wanted Justin to kind of share what his findings were. And then we'll talk about Pat Fuller.
Yeah, so we looked at the intersection within, in January, we came out, we collected data, traffic volumes, speed data for about a week in January. And it was one of those kind of nicer weeks in January. There wasn't any weather, so it was normal driving conditions. And when we looked at the volumes, 142nd and Sixth, we looked at delays also, and probably everybody as well, where there was both the volume there, school-related traffic, and the volumes for the entire day and for the school, arrival dismissal and delay. It still didn't meet the criterias for an all-way stop at that intersection. So we weren't recommending anything to change on the traffic control on that intersection, just the remaining stop control for northbound on Sixth. We also looked at traffic volumes and the speed data on 142nd and Sixth, kind of the edges of town. Kind of, if you can look in the map O two, it shows locations and counts. And based on the speed data and then where the kind of lack of transition from speeds on there, we were recommending the change in speed zones. So there's more transitions than when, as you're coming in from like 69 or from the south about Sixth, it transitions a little bit more. So we're hoping that we'll get within kind of the immediate Almond area better compliance with speed with drivers. Get to kind of a buffer area where you can really transition down. I know on the east side, there's kind of a long area where it feels like you're kind of in a rural section and the speed limit is pretty low. So with those transitions, the compliance should be a little better within town. And then those recommendations. And then we also looked at options to do some traffic calming at the intersection of 142nd and Sixth. And kind of looked at two options. And one option was kind of a lower cost option. And the second option would be higher cost option. And the first option was just narrowing the roadway on 142nd. And then also narrowing Sixth Street to kind of pinch everybody a little bit tighter lanes to reduce traffic speeds through the intersection along 142nd. And then the second option, kind of ultimate option, I wouldn't say against speed, would be to change the type of intersection from a T to a roundabout. And with that option, there's a kind of a significant impact that would probably happen to Hartland Co-op on the corner of their operations and how they access their sites on both sides of Sixth. That would be kind of, I guess, this is the first kind of step in looking kind of as a hierarchy of project planning. And not to get into detail in the design yet.
Because it hurt me at the same time that, at the same time that the request was made to look at the stop condition on 142nd and Sixth. There was, I was getting a lot of feedback from law enforcement and from others about, you know, speed control. There needed to be more speed control in the community. So that's why I asked Justin to take a look at that. Look at traffic calming, look at the speeds, posted speeds and travel speeds and see kind of what the public was doing. So, and I think part of it is just that you were coming into the community and there just wasn't, you know, there wasn't that feeling like I'm in the community, but you were being asked to reduce speed. So then also, we had, like Justin talked about, there was that big reduction from 55 to 35 and then to 25. So asking people to, you know, go from 55 to 35, and they're still seeing, you know, it feels pretty rural. I think that was kind of a hard ask for a lot of, a lot of people. And that was demonstrated in their travel speeds. So in my mind, like 142nd and Sixth kind of act like major streets in Almond. So like even up in Aitney, they would, you know, they don't treat their major streets like residential streets and don't have them at 25. They have them at 30, you know, they have them at 35. Because that's where the bulk of the shopping's moving around. It is slower in the neighborhoods that's 25, but so. And that's kind of what Justin saw too and what his recommendations were was to increase that speed a little bit and make for a better transition down from 25 down to his recommended target.
Yeah, that these speed zones are kind of recommended limits. They're shown in the map O on Figure Six. We're also recommending keeping that 25 on school zone on Sixth.
So, yeah, so I've talked with, I've worked with Norco Schools about his concerns. I made personal observations and came up during getting out of school time and, you know, watched how the traffic queued. I saw northbound traffic when schools getting down. There's about 10 minutes where there's just a massive slug of people all going northbound to 142nd and going east or west. The longest queue I saw was six or seven vehicles, three of those being bus ups. And the wait was not due to traffic on 142nd. It was just pulling up and stopping, looking, going, pulling up, stopping, looking, going. So that was the delay I saw, which was between a minute, a minute and a half. That sixth vehicle to get up to the intersection, look and go. So, and so doing anything on 142nd, wouldn't do anything about that queue, that slug of vehicles that just poured out of the school. Wouldn't get them through that intersection any faster. So, so now we talk about, you know, is that acceptable? You know, something that's between a minute and two minutes delay? Do we need to look at other options? And I kind of want to keep back from you folks too about what your thoughts were on the justice recommended speed, speed changes.
Well, I'll start, I guess, with our recommendations. But we've been working on this for now probably three years. It's taken a long time, a lot of studies, a lot of numbers, a lot of information. And, you know, the first one here is from your Bob Rice, Public Works Director. He's 2005 recommending that we have stops right up here. So everybody can see that. Also got a letter from the director of safety and compliance from Hartland Co-op strongly recommending stop signs at that intersection because of the traffic, the school traffic that they produce. I've got a letter here from the Norco School Board, signed by all the school board and all the, the Almond City Council. And, you know, I mean, you know, it's a lot of work to get all this stuff together. And if you live in the community, you don't, neither do you. You just don't live here. You don't know what it's like. And we have to deal with it every day. And I can tell you, these residents here are scared to death to back out or get out on that street on 142nd, either east or west. It's, they're scared to death. And I've been told that, I've gone door to door. And that is what we've got to do about this. What can we do about this? And, you know, I think it's ground dogs are expensive. You know, all we're asking for is not taking stop signs at the three-way intersection up here. And also slow traffic down, which I know that here aren't supposed to be the stop sign, slow traffic down. But in this case, we would like to have very simple stops east-west on 142nd Ave. It just can't be that difficult. And if that county supervisor had been done years ago. And I just don't understand why we have to spend all this money on engineers or works, extent of speed summaries, meets for people. We spent money.
Because you keep, because you keep asking the same question over and over again. And you just don't like the answer you're getting. So that's why money was spent, just to demonstrate that.
When we get saved, if we put that stop sign right there.
What happens if you pull out and get hit anywhere? What happens if you go to Walmart and you pull out and get hit?
Yeah, but the guy's doing 75 mile an hour through town. I'm assuming he was doing 25. I pull out, I'm dead. Tough shit.
It's not tough shit.
No, but that's what it's gonna take.
It's not gonna take that, because it's still not gonna get a stop sign.
So it doesn't matter, why do we even have a speed limit of 25? You might as well make it 55, because they'll go up to 70 then. You go 25, you go 30, they're gonna do 45, they're gonna do 55. They're doing it now. How did we slow it down without doing nothing?
I'm not saying we're gonna do nothing. I'm just saying.
Well, that's what you're, that's what you read to that sign.
And frankly, what's gonna happen? You, if it, just as you portrayed, traffic's moving on 142nd. We had that stop sign at Sixth.
Who cares about 10 minutes of slowing it now? Then we gotta stop.
Hold on one second. 142nd traffic is driving 75 miles an hour. You put a stop sign at Sixth, 75 miles an hour to zero, and then right back up to 75.
Exactly.
So what did you buy?
Okay, then let's put another one at Third. Let's put one at Sixth. Let's make them stop four times through town. Here we go at that end corner. Because it doesn't work. I've emailed the sheriff. You guys probably get the report, because I say, they're doing it again. 75, I can watch them, I can hear them coming into town. Boom! And it's like.
And they said it repeated, it was the same person or it was different?
It's the same time. It's 6 o'clock in the morning until 9:00. It is 4:00 in the afternoon, or 3:30 in the afternoon, then to 6:00, 7:00, about at 9:00. And yes, they're half the time, they're the same person.
You know, it's just common sense. It's our community, our community. And we feel like we're the ones that are hanging out there. It's your screen, but it's our community. And we should have prescience. We should have, we have to.
But you don't have prescience over state law.
No. Share with the stop sign here once before.
But you're asking me to put a stop sign. And so I'm gonna be compliant with the state law.
Well, let me tell you. You can be compliant with state law, but. Common sense, that's all we're asking, so common sense. Put a stop sign. And save us the party having a terrible experience.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you did suggest the narrowing or the road that's gonna stay and the roundabout. So would the city pay for that? Would the county help pay for that? Like, how, how would you?
The city roads, I would pay for it.
You would pay for it? So prior law enforcement, I really think that, I had the study for a different reason, but there's a roundabout in your packet and Iowa DOT did a study. They're out there, Ohio DOT, New Mexico DOT. You look at roundabouts, they are the next best thing for safety-wise in your community. I don't know why you guys are against this. I live down here, we have two stop signs within two blocks of each other. And let me tell you, they don't stop. They don't stop. They, sometimes they don't even slow down. Like, and so I, I, as a council member, I don't think a stop sign's gonna do it. And I said that a year. If the county is suggesting a roundabout, I'm all for it.
There's not a footprint big enough up there for this to go in up there, is there? There's gas pumps on one side, there's buildings on the other. Are you gonna throw the road into the farmer's field? The footprint that this is gonna carry, there is not enough room up there to put that.
Not in the existing, they moved the park issue.
I just don't see how it's applicable. With those two entities already in place, are you gonna have the Co-op take out its building and take away the only fuel station we have in the community that everybody uses? It just doesn't seem applicable.
We have to look at it and see what we can open my book. And I haven't been able to speak with the Co-op about their long-term plans for this stuff. But I heard that they're, that they're intending to just maybe change, maybe a little bit. But I, but I don't know.
Because they, they take quite a bit of a footprint out of a narrow. If you, it's, it just.
And that intersection, I teach drivers in this community, that intersection, your young kids have no idea. Like, they are turning for 142nd onto Sixth and they wanna turn through that little weird narrow looking thing because they don't see the little white median. And then when we're going to turn on 142nd, they're over here where they should be between the two stop signs. Like, our young kids have no idea that somebody has to do that intersection. So something needs to be done with it. And not a sign.
Can I ask a question first? My name is James Watt, I live at 025 and 142nd. I have one, or a couple of questions. Is, what did they do prior to 212? Did they always have a stop sign? Because I thought I heard that in 212, somebody said, "Just put a stop sign on." Was it just a needle?
I believe it was there and they moved it down to First. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the back of the book was what they did because the dealers to the school, they were all on First Street. They were, and a lot of people, they got their kids, so they moved it.
So there was actually no stop sign?
There was a stop sign up there at Sixth.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember ever seeing a stop sign.
It's been there four years and I can't remember a stop sign.
And then 82, I don't remember. Or 85, I don't remember a stop sign being on 142nd. But this period, it was, you know, it was still 25. And then they put the stop sign up, which they knocked it down. How many times? Because they didn't like it.
And then my last, just the last question I have. So you were talking about putting a stop sign to stop traffic coming from east headwinds on 142nd?
Right.
But, no, the only question is, I'm kind of confused because you go over the other street over there where that stop sign stops you going east. I don't get that, but I buy it. I hope to observe in the future. Was it because that, the city alone owns that? So that's how that sign got in there? So the county, well, you guys are, and you're saying, "Oh, just stop sign."
Yeah, there's different.
That's why we moved that. It's a lot better.
No cost to the community, right?
Yeah, no, that's all I have to say.
So are, are offered without background? You know, the accidents and delays and traffic volumes. And for city's way, we'll just say it is. Just like maybe those sessions.
Oh, maybe the volumes, you probably have to, I can't recall, maybe tricky triple volumes maybe. What's your speed set? Set, say.
What's the average speed?
So that's kind of irrelevant to the, looking at the traffic control at the intersection. With the 142nd, it was indications for, I would say, kind of right on the edges of kind of where the housing is. And then the average, average speed were, east side, 40-ish. And about the same on the west side. And the 80, 50 percentile speed is high. Just over 40. They're still within, within that 25 mile an hour speed zone.
I'd want to add one more thing while I'm thinking about it.
Yes, sir.
Sure, I won't say anything. So would you, Walter, would you direct the agricultural traffic somewhere else? Like, when I, I see big sprayers, I see tractors with hens and traders on them and combines with heads on them. They would not be able to make it around that roundabout.
Can you just make it mountable? So like, big vehicles like that, they have like a mountable curb in the middle so they can ride up on that and still go around it?
Okay.
Because, yeah, otherwise you'd have to make something that's so.
So I'll chat with my group as I do with the chief here, about five or two or so. I mean, the school was part of the letter that was sent in. Jill Alteringer, I know, mentioned her, came out. The city had talked to her about the stop sign and asked me about it. Having driven a bus a little bit this year, I do know it's a little bit tricky to get left, depending on the time of the day of it. So I said, certainly, I wouldn't be against it. And the other thing is, we have been trying to grab traffic as much as possible to Sixth Street and then across 141st. I appreciate everyone that does send, you know, buses that goes on Third Street, sending me photos so that we can address that with our drivers. Because I think effectively, we've got our buses to be off that road. I know that Logan has done a really good job of bringing ideas on how to keep some of the other bigger, heavier machinery off those roads. So after the wake, when it's on the roads, they just helps. And so from my perspective, unfortunately, they have regulations that they're trying to abide by. And it sounds like that is not saying that it's a necessity at this point. I know me personally, driving up here, when the feedback sign tells me how fast I'm driving, it makes me extra aware of my speed and getting down to 25 miles an hour. So, and I know we don't have one coming from the other direction. So that would be one idea I would throw out is, is there a potential of getting another speed feedback coming from us to help people understand how fast they are? We're doing our best to try to get everyone to go that Sixth Street and cross 141st with our school's traffic. And hopefully here in about a month, you won't even have any more intersection traffic. Appreciate the invite, appreciate the study and the time and effort made down. One other piece of information that did stick with me after I talked to Aaron was that as far back as they could find, there wasn't, there hasn't been an accident at this intersection. He goes, "The place in Almond where the most accidents happen is your parking lot at the high school." And I'm like, well, that's, that's a strong point there. But one, obviously, it won't be safe. And I think, I think Massacre River students do actually go down south on Sixth Street. But we're open to ideas of being partner in this.
We had two accidents on Sixth down here at the intersection in the last month.
Six and 134th, which actually has the, literally stopped.
I was there, one were rendered there and then there was one early morning right near Fonger's Corner. And there's stop signs down there. Yeah, they still, they still speed. There's, there's a very good. So that's a good suggestion. So, Aaron, where, where do we go? It's quite hard here to talk about. So we have to go down from the board supervisors every Tuesday morning at 9:00 and pound on the podium to get what we need to get for.
Petition from Eric.
Petition, they don't, they, they don't matter. It's, it's.
I don't know why you're, I don't know why you're under the impression you have to raise your, I'm sitting right here in front of you.
Well, I know, but, you know, I know politics. I sat down there on that board, but I'll, I'll afford it.
I know I'm not a politician. So here I sit.
I am. So if you wanna, if you wanna go down there and rat a hole.
But I mean, I will. I'm not, I mean, there needs to be anybody who's gonna, who knew you were.
So. I'm one that I have for these people that live up here in this town.
But I'm here to talk to you about solutions. I'm not trying to argue with you or find you or.
Your solutions don't take into account the safety of our residents and they have to deal with it every day. So I'm not gonna argue about the, all the suggestions of the traffic engineer.
Maybe some, some things to traffic calming, we can adjust the speeds so we have a better transition into town. We can look at intersection improvements. So that would be the next steps for me, if we can look at intersection improvements at 142nd and Sixth. And, you know, I would, I would move forward with, you know, adjusting the speed limits so we get a better transition coming into town. And those would be my next steps.
I kind of liked when the radar coming from the west would like scream at people and the lights would flash. That really caught your eye. Now it doesn't do it anymore. Now it just shows you your speed. But when it would flash at you, you go, whoa, you should slow down. So I think people that are familiar with the area, and I know trying to do Slater and the other little towns that have those radars, that catches my eye. But when I just see that anymore, I'm so conditioned to seeing those little radar things it doesn't catch my eye. I think it needs to go back to screaming at people. At least flashes so that they see it. It's coming up at the trees and depending on where the sun is and the shadows. It's kind of tough right there where you just don't pay attention to it. You're coming up that hill, there's deer that come across there, there's turkeys. We're looking at the wildlife, we're from rural Iowa. I think it needs to scream at us again. I liked it when it slowed down and it was loud.
Thumbs up or a smiling face.
There you go.
Big, all right. Don't get me in trouble here. That was just a test. That was just a test.
We all want a prize, so give us a prize. Give us a thumbs up, put it backward.
The thing is, is that people are just.
But just do it, I think it would hurt for her to do it.
No, I'm just saying that, it doesn't matter. It's your, trying to.
Probably the sign.
The street, the line is trying to set a series.
So I'd rather you just walk out.
So Aaron, I want to thank you for trying. I want to thank you guys for this study. Bob, I think they are here for the safety. Just because we're, we don't agree that you're putting a stop sign doesn't mean he's not here for safety. He said, like I said, just to pay for the roundabout. I think our first steps. Aaron, what do you think our first steps would be? And I think that we should, as a council, I mean, they have studies. They're the experts, not us. And I think that we should. And by the way, there is not a speed limit signed from 142nd to Sixth until this one right here. So again, T Striker said, I'm like, the speed limit is over there. So people that come off on 142nd don't even know what the speed limit is. Because there's not even a speed limit sign. So, Aaron, what do you suggest?
Just that we're with law enforcement and justice and we'll work towards implementing the speed zone changes and then hope for somebody to work with us to put together to take a look at that intersection and find us a path forward on that. Because there is a right-of-way restrictions, so you're not gonna, not gonna give any property to make, you know, make a roundabout. So we're gonna have to find something that works with the property owners and which is in this intersection, so.
I think too, there's a possibility that some lower cost traffic calming, dislist everybody. It doesn't really sound like anyone's concerned about the delay of happening all-way stops so we can get to the intersection. Everyone's concerned about speeds on 142nd. So I think there may be some lower cost traffic calming that we can potentially implement. And it'd be low cost enough that if it worked fine, it's not working, we can just remove it, you know, just with paint and channelizers. Kind of, I feel forward to, before we go into a bit detailed design, reconstructing the intersection.
If you ever rolled into a community that's done some of that, like they'll nick down the roads to bring the curbs in so it's narrower and everybody just, you're afraid of going up over the curb or they'll have divided islands, you know, which again, will narrow the width of the lanes. So everybody slows down so they don't, you know, play good ball running the curbs and stuff. So there are things that we can look at to try to slow traffic down on 142nd once you get into the city. Once you get into the city.
So, there's, what I don't understand there is, you're, you would like to see a stop sign there?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna know, like a little kid, what is the hard reason why Hope County will not have a stop sign there?
As a, as a county, as a county engineer, I'm required to do awards. Required to demonstrate that a stop sign, it meets the requirements that had a stop sign. To take it from a control to a, you know, to a controlled intersection. So you look at crashes, you look at traffic volumes, look at delays, there's some other, those are the primary ones. There's some other minor ones that you look at as well. And, and so if I were to ignore all of that and say, you guys don't know what you're talking about, I'm gonna put a stop sign in. And then for whatever reason, somebody blows that stop sign, smashes into somebody else, and then it goes to court. And then they look at, why is there a stop there in this, in this rural area? Why is there an always stop there? Was it warrants setting, did it meet the warrants? You know, then, actually, you know, I'm trying to explain why I put a stop sign in there. It wasn't warranted to be there because it gave people a false sense of security. They pulled out, somebody else just ignored it because there isn't really any traffic. They just blew through there.
But if it would happen, if there was a stop sign, I'm not worried about it.
Um, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you were, if you came up to it as it is today, if you came up to it as, as it is today and traffic doesn't have to stop and you just drove out in front of a car, that's a lot different than thinking that they're gonna stop and then they smash into.
So then, Owen, this is, you, in all due respect for you and your job and what you do, I mean, you're the one that carries the ball of that saying, yeah, well, I'm terrible at this, it's all in the, the council. And then you take it back to people at Hope County, correct? And were you just the one that says, I can add a stop sign, I can?
The decision rests with me.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's a big responsibility and that's what I was getting at.
Just because of my position, that's what, kind of, Buck kind of stops with me on that. If, if they were to, if the board were to direct a stop sign to be placed, I mean.
So then you may be taking a lot of relief off yourself. You're supposed to go right to the board.
If they, if they do that, it wouldn't be a good thing. And I don't know that they would. Because, I mean, there's a reason that we're, we're supposed to follow rules. There's a reason that they have these, you know, these regulations and these rules for why you place cars. Just, that, that's just one example that I gave you, that, that somebody sees that there's no traffic and why do I have to stop? They blow through that.
So, I have a question. So then why doesn't that apply down on that next street when you?
It's a safe street.
When you hit East, do you mean where there's?
In the mid-mock.
You just stop randomly? Okay, but I just always wondered why that was there.
Are you talking across Sixty-Nine?
Well, no, when you go across Sixty-Nine and you turn east, what's the next street down there?
It's Hundred Thirty Fourth.
Yeah, and then you go, there's all those new house, there's about four new houses. And then you have a random stop sign in the middle of nowhere.
And it's, it's kind of, it's not safe.
Huh?
It's kind of a little bit unsafe.
Oh, so why is that there? Because a person could blow through that one too. So how does that not make you wild? Yeah, somebody goes through that stop sign. Because it's.
I don't think we're talking about, it's kind of.
All right, that's.
So, I, I wanted to read this, this paragraph. It was from Bob Rice, who probably works prior to Karen here. So the school district also requests the installation of a stop sign on R P six and R P Hundred Thirty Second. As you know, the last time we proposed the installation of a stop sign on R P six, we were met with considerable opposition, especially from officials from the R P co-op. However, we have agreed to the stop sign warrants. And with anticipated increase in traffic at this intersection, which may will be inexperienced teenage drivers, we believe it is warranted to install a stop sign. To leave this intersection uncontrolled is inviting future liability exposure to the county. Attached is drawing showing the proposed location of the stop sign, including the avenues to protect it due to surrounding face surfaces of large numbers of trucks turning in this city. So, I mean, you are completely one hundred eighty degrees from your credit system, Bob Rice.
Oh, that was in twenty thirteen. We're in twenty twenty-five.
I know we're in twenty thirteen, but, but let me tell you, I'm sticking them again on this thing. I'm, I'm going for a stop sign. So if there's anything else, anybody else wanna, wanna put, put forward here? You guys are off the fire.
We were here because the sheriff wants us to be here here. I know personally, I've taken several speed limit complaints, which we've been responsive to and trying to stop traffic down on Hundred Thirty Second. But I think we'll have so many deputies that have to cover the whole county. So we're doing what we can. I do appreciate the email updates on issues, some are good, some are not so good. I know that speech really does help, we can get down here. But again, be used to that, I understand that. Do what we can.
Anybody else? Okay, this issue is a disaster.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Are they giving emails to you?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, speed bump thing. Does, uh, you, Perry, brought that up, third or fourth speed? Would you add that to Hundred Thirty Second or something?
Yeah, so everybody down on Fourth Street that I've talked to and they've questioned me about this with the repaving of the streets, would like to see the speed bump go back in. I talked to, uh, yeah, Debbie Elmore, and she rode by and she heard that I was the go-to guy about speed bumps. We got a guy right here on Third Speed. What do you feel about a speed bump? Uh, so the consensus is, they'd like to see him just put back in, uh, whatever, same way, if you got a better way. I go down, what street is that in Des Moines? Uh, they've got the ones that are five foot wide and six eight. And that, that shuts down, uh, truck traffic big time. There's no trucks go down, uh, what?
It's Guthrie, I believe.
Guthrie, yes. And I'll tell you what, if you're not paying attention, you got anything bigger than a car, a little car, uh, you're doing the head bump shovel because it's throwing you. So any options, but the consensus, they would really like to see him go back in after the storm server goes in and they repave the roads. The sign posts are still there, Logan still has the signs, just easy transition, get them back in. Everybody feels it'll slow the traffic down, it will cut down on bus and, uh, large truck traffic because they don't wanna go on any of their, uh.
We have the same echo we have, we have the same problem on Hunter and what that, they're complaining.
Yeah, but they need to be relocated to where they were before.
So why, 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 why do we, they were out there, we took them out for whatever reason. Why are we gonna put them back? Why don't we look at a better, safer solution for our communities? Like, like the roundabouts or road diets or, road diets really work. I went to the community with.
What's a road diet?
A road diet is exactly what he said, bring in the curbs. You know, so people are bringing the, narrow the road so that, I know that we don't have curbs, but you know what? That's why we're here. We, we can put curbs where we want, it's our city. Right? I worked in a city where it was a runway, called it, University Avenue was a runway. It was twenty-five and I had people going a hundred, a hundred and twenty down the university. They did a road diet, boom, nothing. That you narrow those lanes and it really messes, just like she said, the flashing lights. It really messes with you and it slows people down. It's proven. So why do we, why do we wanna put speed bumps back where we already took them out? That doesn't make sense to me.
Nobody that lived on those streets wanted them taken out.
So then why were they taken out?
Exactly.
It's really hard to do, it's. And, and the pipe was underneath the road.
Right.
Logan?
He's talking to the street.
But they were taken out for a reason, that's what I'm saying. They were taken out for a reason, so why would we put them back? Why don't we find a better solution for a community that is proven?
I know one of those things is a point.
Right?
My, my opinion, that's all, that's all we're out of. So the job's been, they're out of position. So that's why we were removed, announced to remove.
No, the council had no vote on removing, uh, speed bumps. On Hundred Thirty Fourth, they were, they were.
They're on line.
Yeah, they were. You were stopping that dude. Your words over speed.
Yeah, there's still traffic on Third and Fourth.
Still there.
It's still there and they're, they fly.
They do.
They do.
The moms, the moms are the worst.
Yeah, yeah, it's like teach your kids to slow down.
And our roads are narrow.
Fly up and down the street.
We don't have a lot of road to squeeze in and it'll be a one-way, you can do one-way streets, I guess.
Anyway, maybe they'll drive on the right side or the.
No, we got bad guys on the left side, all the way up until it gets to the stop sign. Then you pull door roomies right line. And, you know, I, I went down to pick up a young man that did the elementary school and they're still all lined up on there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they're always right, right, everything.
So there's no, there's no way to get two cars? You can't get three cars down the street.
They'll, they'll stop on one forty-two if they turn the corner, they gotta stop on one forty-six.
You know, it.
I don't understand that.
You just gotta listen to the rest.
And if we could get.
Being real, I'd be, I, that's why I just.
If we could get stop signs up there, putting those rumble strips up there to catch your attention, would that solve the legality of someone blowing through that stop sign? The, the rubble bumps like they have up here at, uh, about Hundred Forty, what is that?
Two ten.
Two ten, yeah. The rubble bumps come from all four ways. That way, there's no mistake in it, that you're, you're coming to a stop sign. So I, I just thought that that number was brought up.
But that, but this intersection is not a David Joyce intersection. That intersection, there's been fatalities. We haven't even had an accident here. You can't just put this stuff up. There are rules and regulations for it. Like federal code, not just state level. But you can't just put a rumble strip where you wanna put a rumble strip or a stop sign like he said, but.
Well, maybe that's why they didn't bring it up, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's a really dangerous intersection, just like the big L D that was over here.
I heard her say the one that she running for a rumble stop.
Right.
But the citizens don't wanna run about.
Well, you do.
I have to.
Uh, okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is, uh, options for small markets.
I just put that on there, it definitely explains what it takes to, to feature business on that.
Anything you can top that.
Dark hour.
Okay, it's true. Lord, Lord was a hundred percent correct. We don't want to.
Okay, uh, that's a moot point there. Uh, the next thing is the zoning over-sized sheds, over-sized sheds.
It's pretty specific, it doesn't allow to put that more thousand square foot building up. It says.
I know your gym's ditched, so I hear.
Yeah, everybody, can we, uh, we need to, not all walk over each other's possible here. That is one of the incentives, we don't follow our own codes and rights. Number one, the way I know it, number one, it's a issue that's all done, the council's voted. It's all done, but the next number two, then it's time for us to sit down and change the word of our code.
That's what I just asked.
Change.
The word you said you can't have a thousand square foot building.
So you two can, can put together your reach.
Here's the lawyer. Here's the funny thing, Bob.
Yeah.
We changed our codes and the verdict in our code because we didn't like what somebody did when they built an oversized wall. And now we're gonna try, and now we're gonna go back on that and we're gonna allow people to build an oversized wall.
Well, we have to stop this community, we have to stop, uh, doing what people want and doing what is right for the city. Okay?
That oversized wall is great for them.
Okay, and, and. What I'm saying is you need to, you need to come up with your solution.
I have a solution.
And, and present, you know, to the council for approval.
I did.
And, and, uh, and then people work with, uh, Jim. So do the, the word.
It's not up to me as a council, except for the finding Sheila, except for finding the bill.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll follow the rules and procedures to do that. And, uh, well, I'm having a hard time getting a forum for the planning and zoning. I had two good people to go on there, but that didn't happen. And I don't know, it gets up to you guys. You are the ones who determine who is on planning and zoning. It's not me, it's you. I have no say in that, as you have pointed out. So it's on you to get people to serve on planning zoning that will actually be there.
So the ones that are there.
You're the ones that's gonna have to remove the ones that are on there.
So the ones that are on there.
Or figure out a way to do it.
We just find some of what the council says and what, and what our rights are at the council with, with those people.
It's.
It's, look, it's, it's, you're right, Bob, it's in the book. Everything is in the book, it's black and white and we don't follow.
Well, I mean, we give this poor guy such a hard time and I understand his safety. We give this guy such a hard time for following the rules that he's, uh, he asked to follow or will be.
Okay, or people. Did you know that, uh, the, uh, board adjustments, uh, the people that are on that board can get sued? If they make a decision that's out of their, maybe to, sir.
You're not back on the stop sign, are you?
No, I, I used it, I used it as an example of, we, we all have our opinions. I have, I have plenty of them. But when it comes to what, it's, it's, it's in that book, it is black and white of what we require. It is black and white of what, if somebody wants to do something that's not in there, it's up to them to, to, uh, point out hardship. It's not up to the lawyer, it's up to them to point out hardship. And that's, I'm not wanting to, because I lost too much money on that.
Why, 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 I understand.
I just, it's, it's.
Trust me.
We have reasons. That's why, that's why we have.
Okay, next, uh, next item on the agenda is review banking and investment options. That's, uh, Sherry? You know, I, I'm, I, I, it's not my reliable lawyer to do that.
Thank you guys for.
Thanks. See you guys.
You, you asked for a illegal vote.
Okay, what?
The bigger head, maybe, Nick.
I'm with us. Banking options. I went to school last week, so I wanna, you guys sit down and make and talk about those other banking options. But I just wanna make sure it's all at these statements, just go get.
Did, did he say three quarters of a percent interest on the money is, is? Yeah, normal, where, when a lot of people are getting five and seven and.
I think I remember in the audit last week, this week he's on vacation, that's why he couldn't be here. So that's why I just wanna put this up and then I want you guys to make statements.
Well, that's a question that I'd like to, him to answer for us because it doesn't seem like very much.
And I tried to, I heard it last week and she actually picked our money up out of her bank and moved it to another bank to piss this bank up to get more money. So I wanna sit down and talk to her about how that process really works.
Because the most we're getting is one percent on, on these. And, and I think that's, that's kinda like a slap in the face, uh, for a city that is really rolling through quite a bit of money and then. once money gets in certain accounts, it don't really move and, and it's a stable income for them because they're lending it out at way larger amounts and there should be some, some.
Do you remember the reason that, that they put restrictions on cities and counties to invest in their money? Because they have a legislator that went around the cities and counties that we spent pooled up millions of dollars and sent it to a guy in California to invest it, when in fact he stole it. And caused all kinds of problems to the legislator. So they have some severe restrictions on where we can do this.
FDIC insured the banks?
No, it, I mean, there's just a lot of rules we have to follow.
Yeah, I can.
And I don't know if I really wanna follow other cities. I'm gonna follow my lawyer and my accountant. And we'll follow the law.
Well, that, that, yeah, but it'd be, it would be, wouldn't be doing our community a service if we didn't research it. And if we get two percent, guess what that is on one percent? At a hundred percent rate.
Just give me another few weeks.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
This audit was started today.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, there's anything else?
I think we.
You wanna put uh, so I'm gonna put it, I am on the agenda uh on the speed bump situation where you wanna talk about this.
Uh.
Two of us here, so we need to get more.
I, I do have, I do have a lot of access to a lot of reports and, and other things, studies. Um, I gave everybody a list at one point. I'm sure that's on the chat somewhere, but I, I know that there's stuff on roundabouts, there's stuff on speed bumps, there's stuff on uh what's your, I evaluate your impact on schools. Yes, from the guy that has to deal with them and whatever. You, I, I would say.
I don't have a personal opinion. I, I would say uh depends on, I mean, you have to follow the specifications put forth um when, when you install those and you have to decide which is best for your community. There's speed bumps, there's speed humps, there's speed tings. Um, there are a lot of different things. Um, what's your, your cars that are driving through town? Are you gonna be wrecking the exhaust? Uh, is a roundabout a better way to go? Um, what's the, you know, the cost of this versus that? I mean, there's a lot of different themes that.
The speed bumps that were taken out, uh you, you probably were doing a pretty good job of traversing them because they weren't all chewed up, beat up.
Well.
And you, how many years were they there?
I, I, I never had speed bumps when plowing snow. I can tell you that there've been studies that it would.
Oh.
It would, it would indicate, you know, excess care uh when plowing snow, when you have speed bumps, so. But it's been a while since I've read any of that. I, I mean, it's the same with roundabouts. There's excess care that has speed taking, so.
And culminates.
And, okay, don't get me started.
I doubt you all, their, can you get words or whatever, may not take into consideration what you also have. It's also about what's best for.
The community and a lot of people, they have the same concerns as the people on one hundred and forty second. Can I back out? Is, or is that mom coming down late to pick up her kid at forty miles an hour? Cause I looked, then I looked this way and I started to back out. We gotta start making our citizens feel safer.
Very true, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I pulled up at the co-op today. The guy was coming down the road and he was at where the three houses are.
Yeah.
I'm at twenty-five mile an hour. I didn't get to a block away and he's on my butt.
Cause we've had these implemented before and people felt safe. I think they wanna go back to that. Uh, to that, that security of the speed bumps, uh they know they got time. It, it just.
I live down on one hundred and forty, right next to one stop signs. I'll be backing out of my driveway in the morning and I see somebody coming. Uh, by the time I get out into the, into the street, they're hunking me because they think I pulled a never stop.
Exactly.
I go, I belong to be having a backing in my driveway and so is my wife. I can't tell you how much she hates backing up.
My wife can't back up.
But she does it because she feels safer at the point of getting in the driveway instead of backing out. In busier times. So that's where we've gone to.
Okay, guys, thank you. I'll get back.